You are watching Access La Porte County Channel 97. Coming up next is the August 7th, 2024 meeting of the La Porte County Board of Commissioners. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot accesslaporte county dot org.
Like to call the La Porte County Commissioners Meeting to Order Wednesday, August 7th, 2024 at 10 o'clock. Mike Seitz, would you lead us in the pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance.
Of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, what we wish under God indivisible liberty and justice for all.
Road call Commissioner Marzinski.
Here.
Commissioner Graham Rosa, present. Commissioner Haney.
Present.
Consider agenda.
Madam President, I have a couple of changes to the addenda. First of all, if we'd like to move under new business 11B, move that up to right under request before 9A, please. Also, permission to put the RWE road use agreement and decommissioning agreement to send them out on the website.
And then we have a third one. Do we have another change?
Sure, I would also put on their consideration of the DEF contract.
What is it?
The contract.
What letters did you say?
D, I believe it was DEF.
DEF, thank you. We have a motion, do we have a motion? And a second? Do we have a second?
Yes.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Moving on, consider approval of July 17th, 2024 meeting minutes.
Motion to approve is presented.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Consideration of claims, we'll do payroll first.
For payroll ending July 26th, 2024, we have $1,512,917.66.
Motion to approve payroll as presented.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Operating expense claims, we have $1,906,872.30.
Motion to approve the operating expense claims as presented.
Before I second that, I have questioned, I've got, I show here, one, two, three, four, five unpaid POs to law firm Icor and Icor. This is like six months worth of charges. That if, we're probably already going to have to pay interest on these, we're lucky if we don't get sued. When are we, these were approved by the Board of Commissioners at a meeting, when are we going to get this taken care of?
I'm under the impression that they're in the process of being paid, that's all I know.
Commissioner Marzinski.
Yes.
Guy DiMartino, that's my understanding too, that they're in line to be paid at this point in time.
I'll be keeping an eye on it, thank you.
Okay, moving on.
I'll second the, second then.
So we have a motion in a second for operating expense claims, all those in favor say aye.
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 Madam President, if it pleases the Chair and the Board, could we take 11B and move that up? If it's all right, just right ahead of public comment, that way if something needs to, if our attorney needs to say something at any point, he's he's at his, he'd be, whoever would be at their position. Rather than waiting for a couple more here down the line, if that's all right.
So you want to move something out of request to above public comment?
For this one point, just so that we have a, an attorney, just in case.
Yeah.
If not, that's fine, I just thought I'd float that out there if you.
Probably a good idea, if that emotion else second, we can do it right now.
Why don't we do it under the request?
Yeah.
So it'll be, we'll move it from new business. You want to move it from new business to one of, to, to before the request?
Right, that's what.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So we'll continue with public comment, do we have anyone for public comment?
Steve Hallfield, 6782 East 100 South Mill Creek, I'm glad to see that they're going to add the road use and the decommissioning for the public to look at that before the August 27th meeting. Because I'm hoping you guys keep a very, very close tabs on you, because I've surveyed the roads in St. Joe County with these solar companies are doing. They're not living up their end of their bargain, so I just want to make sure you do that. And under the ordinance for the three-way stop sign, I just told Mr. Sullivan explains, is it going to be both intersections there? Because there's two three-way intersections at that, one north and one south. So I'd like to know if you're going to explain to that a little bit, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is Tommy Kalavich from 1316 Ohio Street, I'm a Michigan City man. Good morning to our distinguished and honorable La Porte County Commissioners. I'd like to perhaps have a status update on the Ethan Wabash property. It looks like all the county offices are now out of there, I drive by there and nobody's there anymore. I'm sure you all know, that's the very prime piece of real estate we have there. I know the county bought that in 2002 from the Pagaris Brothers, and they paid $645,500 for it. The last thing we want to have there is another vacant structure here in our city. Those lead to a whole period of other problems. Now, I'd just like to know what's going on there. I'd just like to let everybody know that it is back to school time, so everybody be mindful of the school bus stop farm. Smoking carbon monoxide detectors save lives, and thank you very much.
Thank you, anyone else from public comment? Closing public comment, moving on to, you know what, and I realize what you guys are saying about the having an attorney up here. So between public comment and department heads, I'd like to consider the contract between the commissioners and the attorney Guy DiMartino.
Motion to approve the contract.
Second.
So we have a, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And then, so you've been hired, if you'd like to come up here. And then, I would just like to say to Scott, you know what, I think you've done a fabulous job for us. We really do appreciate everything that you have done. I mean, if you'd like to, I think this is a good opportunity for you to explain to the cup, to the county, like where you're going and, and how you're still willing to help us out when we need you. But we, I personally do appreciate you stepping in and helping us when we really needed you.
Oh, thank you, Madam President, I appreciate your kind words. So, just so the public understands, and I've spoken to each commissioner individually. I had a meeting with President Graham Rosa, well, a couple of weeks ago, perhaps, and with my practice that I've had for the past 20 years, it just became increasingly more incompatible with giving you the service the board deserves time-wise. And that's not fair to the board. And when I had the privilege of accepting this position back, I believe May 9th of last year, I don't think it was ever intended for me to be the permanent ad nauseam county attorney. So I thought this would be a good time to step down after speaking with President Graham Rosa, with budget hearings coming up, and the more, and all the time it's going to take here on out. I recommended Attorney DiMartino due to his already familiarity with county government institutional knowledge and his experience with the council, so I think he'll be a perfect fit, he was already doing a lot of work for the county. So I appreciated getting to know all of you, the department heads, the council members, it's been an education because it wasn't really within my ability like prior to taking this job. I've learned a lot, and I've expressed to President Graham Rosa that in any way in the future, if anyone needs help and you need me to fill in some, for something, or just an opinion on some matter, be more than happy to do it. The other benefit with Mr. DiMartino is that we both work under the same physical structure. So we're always in contact with each other, and so there should be a smooth, easy transition. So thank you, and while I'm up here, just because I do have to get going with respect to the solar issue, if I made Madam President, Mr. DiMartino and I had a conference call a day or so ago with the solar attorneys with respect to the decommissioning agreement and the road use agreement. So what we're asking for today, once I get final approval, the final tweak of the decommissioning agreement, and I'll let you know, Commissioner Marzinski, we want to put that on the website, because we want the public to have total transparency and have access to these proposed agreements. And if they have any criticisms or concerns, they need to let us know. So we can try to address that with the solar company, and then I'm asking that we put those agreements on the agenda two weeks from today for the consideration for the commissioners. Now, if there's a problem, it doesn't mean you have to pass it, but we just have to keep this moving along. And this way, I think it meets everyone's needs, and I know there is a lot of criticism before with the solar issue because it was during COVID time and we were having meetings on Zoom, I understand that, but and I've spoken to Mr. Hallfield, and this way, I think this will be the best practice. So everyone that cares about this will be able to look at this agreement, they can nitpick it all they want, and they might give us some great ideas. That quite candidly, maybe I didn't think of, or the solar company didn't think of. So again, thank you very much, I appreciate the opportunity, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott, we appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, so we'll move on to department head comments.
Good morning, Monique Thomas, HR Director. At this time, I would like permission from you to do the food truck event. We had one back in June, and it was a huge success, and I appreciate everyone coming out and supporting it. And I am asking permission to do it again this fall on the dates of September 19th, from 11:00 AM to 2:30 PM, and September the 20th, at the Michigan City Courthouse, from 11:00 AM to 2:30 PM.
I'll make that motion to approve, to set that.
Thank you.
I would second that, that was a great event.
Thank you.
I missed it, and I hope I can make it this one. So I have a motion in a second, all those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you. I just got a text that Alco is not transmitting. Okay, thank you.
So should we continue, Anna?
Yes.
Okay.
Good morning, Rob Sabi with La Porte County Emergency Management. I just wanted to give an update a little bit on the storm that we had that went through here on July 15th. We've been working with the state Department of Homeland Security, they've had teams come up here do damage assessment. We worked with the National Weather Service, they actually came in, did surveying, and determined that it was EF1 tornado that went through. It started around 875 east or west, and then it came through and right about Johnson Road by John Kind Park. We did have damage throughout the whole county, it wasn't just that area with, you know, the storm coming through. So we didn't make our threshold as far as what it needs to make to FEMA. We did declare a disaster in our county, which helped us. Also, we didn't make our threshold for the state to, but since we are connected to Porter County and they met their threshold, then we're eligible also for, there will be some reimbursement out there for us. It just depends on, you know, how much that we can get sent in. So it's important that residents, even if you had a tree down, it didn't do any other damage than the tree falling in your yard. We knew, we're going to have, it's going to go on on social media, all the news stations, the radio stations, all that, so that there'll be websites that you can go online and file a claim. We will help with that, also with the local governments, they're, we're going to be eligible also for reimbursement. So, you know, if the police went on a call that was storm-related, of course, the county highway, I mean, they're still working on tree removal. That all adds up, there's paperwork that we have to fill out though, to get that reimbursement, but we are working on that. The websites and stuff aren't up yet, we're waiting for the state, because they've had, they had Elkhart County, Porter County, so they're kind of still working on all that. And as soon as they get that up and running, then we'll get that out to the public, so.
We hit some damage at some of our parks as well.
Right, so that's all eligible. So they kind of, like I said, we'll help with that, and the state said they would come back up, they've got people that, you know, that deal with that all the time, so they're more than happy to help wherever they can.
Would it help if we put the applications online?
Yes, so like I said, as soon as we get the.
Yet.
Pardon?
Have you done that?
No, we're still waiting on the state to open that up. So as soon as they get that open, where they start, they're going to start processing that, they'll let us know, and then they're going to help us with, you know, flyers and that kind of thing, getting it out to the media, so. But I just wanted to make sure everybody's aware of that, so that, I mean, it doesn't have to have, like I said, you don't have to have structured damage. It could be a tree in the yard, you know, some people had, you know, two, three, five trees in their yard. You know, and they have to pay to have that removed, so that all goes towards that. You know, the government side, like, like I said, highway department, fire department, EMS, if 911 center, you know, dealing with calls, they can claim that also, so that all goes towards our, you know, I guess you'd call us a threshold. Once we meet that, then the state has, it's through the, I think it's through the Better Business Bureau that, our small business association, that there's a fund set up that it's, it's not FEMA, but it's state. So, and we'll get some reimbursement on that. It might not be a lot, but anything helps.
Well, I'd just like to thank you, because I know we drove around and we went out with highway, and we kind of looked at a lot of the different areas that were affected. I know that the park did a great job at putting their plan together and making sure that they got those parks cleaned up and ready for operation right away, so I'm not going to name all the departments, but I'll say all the emergency departments, the, you know, that went out there, we really do appreciate you guys. When we have these types of issues, you always step up to the plate and you really do a great job for us, so we appreciate you.
It was a team effort, that's for sure.
Yeah.
So I mean, I actually had a semi crash right in front of my house, and I couldn't get out of my driveway for 12 hours, so.
You were still on that phone, making sure you were taking care of things for us, so we appreciate you.
As soon as I could get out, I was out, but yeah, it was, it was quite the storm, but we lucked out, I mean, I know, it doesn't really matter if it was tornado or straight-line winds, I mean, a lot of people think it has to be a tornado in order for us to qualify, but it doesn't, it's just the damage. So when they come out and do the damage assessment, they don't care if it's a tornado or, you know, straight-line winds or whatever it is, but we still have to meet a certain threshold, it doesn't matter if it's a tornado or not. So that's why they do the whole county, it's not just where the tornado was at. I know that there's a couple areas there that, you know, that one property we saw was like a 20-acre property, they probably had 100, 200 trees that were absolutely destroyed. And then there, I know the fire chief from Cool Spring Township, he had, I think he said he had about 100 trees in his yard that were destroyed, and he was pretty upset about it, because he planted them all in years ago, so. But anyway, that's, that's where we're at on that, so. Other than that, we've been, you know, busy, we're kind of winding down a little bit with our summer events. So we had the Grand Prix last weekend, and we stood up a full emergency operation center. I think this was the best one that, as far as organization, that we had, everybody was bided, bought into it, so. Yeah, it went real well, we had one incident on the water with a, one of the racers fell out of a boat, and they actually ended up, I believe they airlifted them out to Chicago with the injuries they had, so. Everything came together like it was supposed to, and they got, got the care they needed, and everybody worked together, so I appreciate all that. So, any questions? Anybody got any questions? Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you again for all you do. Any other department heads? Do we have any on Zoom? Last call for department heads. None?
Yep, Madam President. Just a little housekeeping here. Apparently, they have more issues here with the voter van. That we have procedures in place, and always have had, for any employee working for the county. They need to go through HR, there's a list of things that need to be completed in HR. Commissioners, the voter van is licensed by, to the commissioners and insured to the commissioners. So when people are driving it, that have not completed the proper employment procedures, putting the commissioners at risk. And that's unacceptable. So we have to go by the rules, or we're going to have to take the voter van back and put it under the commissioners, and we'll hire, and make sure that it gets done right. So there's a list of items that need to be completed. And if you're driving the voter van, you're considered an employee of the county. So we had Mrs. Haney last meeting saying that she not, not, not a never-have-been-employed-by-the-county employee compensation by unit to Mrs. Haney for 2022, $2,156 paid as an employee. 23, $4,926.80 paid by the county as an employee. She states that she was under contractual agreement, the commissioners sign all contracts. I didn't sign any contract for anybody in voter registration. So we need to clean it up, because it's unacceptable, you're putting the commissioners at risk, and trust me, we get sued enough.
So Commissioner Marzinski, we've talked about the voter van before, that voter van. Well, first of all, every vehicle in the county is titled to the commissioners, because the commissioners, it's how it's set up under state law. We've had this discussion before, it's, you're going to take the ambulances back from EMS, you're going to take the sheriff's department cruisers back from the sheriff's department, I mean, it's a ridiculous assertion to put it in those terms, and we've gone over this before. I still don't think you quite understand the law or how things work. And it's, it's titled under that, but it, the grant, everything was awarded to the Board of Elections, it's the Board of Election, it's the elections van, it's not the commissioners' van, you can't take something back that wasn't yours to begin with. It's like the idea of a gun buyback, it's like, the government never owned them to begin with, how are you going to buy something back you didn't own? In any event, Ms. Haney's never once driven the voter van, not once. So the idea that whatever ridiculous assertion you're trying to make there, she never drove the van, so that's fine. She worked for the elections department, same way dozens, if not 100, different people do in the county to help out with the elections. So this entire concoction you keep bringing up with, you have, you have hard-time reading, I know, there are plenty of programs hooked on phonics, lots of those that can help you out.
It is employee information sheet. Heather Stevens was the department head, and Juanita Haney was the employee. Here we have where Juanita Haney signed that she was an employee, and Heather signed, Heather Stevens signed as her supervisor. Here we have an employee withdrawal certification, Juanita Haney filled it out, and here she signed it. Here we have another form where it says employee withholding exemption for the county. Juanita Haney filled it out, Juanita Haney signed it. Here we have where it's a direct deposit agreement, she went ahead and she filled it out, and she signed it. So the idea that she keeps on coming up here, and you keep on saying that she didn't work for the county, is incorrect. You like to come up here, you like to attack other people, and, and talk about family members, while your family members are working here. I think that was the point. And then you're going to insult me and turn around and say, I can use some kind of a phonics program because I can't read. You know, it's just, we have nine more meetings, sir. If we could just be kind to each other, I would greatly appreciate it.
If you stop obfuscating the truth and lying, it would be much easier. Do you understand?
Can I just ask one question?
Sure.
Is there, is there a policy that anybody that drives a vehicle has to do whatever the requirement is? And if there is, we just need to make sure that all departments know that and follow that, if this is an insurance issue. And at this point in time, are we okay to move on to the next issue? So I'll follow up on that.
Sure, and for clarity's sake, she never drove the van, she never drove any county vehicle once.
She was an employee.
You understand the clerk's function on the elections board?
So.
There's elections boards, there's president, vice president, clerk, how that works.
We're going to have to come up with a, a system for that. And then the secondary thing is, when we went ahead and we looked up the voter van, it was commissioned by the commissioners. In the grant, it never says it was going to the election board. They had specific things that we had to use it for in the 2020 election. I'll be handing over that paperwork to you, and then we can look it up, and then we can go from there instead of having it.
Regardless, it's titled to the county, to the Board of Commission, and it's under our auto policy, so we just have to follow whatever that is for any vehicle, regardless if it's the voter van or anything else, just so we're covered by the insurance. And there's no issue later on, if somebody had a suspended license, or if somebody had something like that. So I think we can work with that.
Thank you.
As far as the sheriff's department or EMS, we know who's driving those vehicles, we know they've been vetted properly and are legal. When the clerk has taken it upon herself to hire people to work in a department that we don't know, that has not been through HR, we don't know. We don't know who's driving, they're putting us at risk, and it's unacceptable.
Well, we had someone driving a sheriff's vehicle that was not a sheriff for over a year.
We'll get, we'll get something, we'll get something out, thank you, thank you, Guy.
Okay, so moving on to requests. We're going to start with the first one, consider permission to approach the council to spend, Barb Houston.
Good morning.
Aye.
This is with Chicago Communications, we've submitted a quote to install county EMS F3 simulcast site at Long Beach Water Tower. Sometimes they can't, you know, it's hard to hear from there, and this will improve it.
Motion to approve permission to approach the council.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And will the commissioners please sign the contract with Chicago Communications when, with approval? We do have the money to pay for this also, in our budget.
Have two ayes, we have an a.
Does it have three signatures or is there one?
Just one. Connie?
Yeah.
Did you approve, I'm sorry.
I'll call it again, so three ayes?
Said motion to approve.
Okay, thank you. Consider travel to Davenport, Iowa for conference for the recorder.
Just for certification or?
Chief's not here, would you like to table it?
Motion to approve.
Let me see what. Yeah, motion to approve, second.
So we have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Consider travel to New Orleans for NAPSA for Steve Iric adult probation.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Consider. Okay. Consider road closures for Hannah Fest that would run from August 9th through the 11th of 2024.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Consider permission to approach the council for additional appropriations. Building facilities.
Morning.
Good morning.
Cheryl Listensky, Director of Facilities. So I would like to request permission to approach the council for additional appropriation for our water utility bills in the amount of $85,000. And I'm also here to request permission to approach council for $28,355. $28,355.64 for Corson. They are contracted with us for our fire and security protection. And that is for any deficiencies that they have found during inspections and repairs. And also for a few inspections also that they haven't completed yet or started on, excuse me.
Motion to approve permission to approach the council.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Consider permission to approach the council for additional appropriations. Our wonderful Parkman.
Thank you. So, so this isn't actually a additional appropriation.
Okay.
It is, it was approved for the roof project out at Red Mill. But J B West, like almost all roofing companies, asked for half down. And when we tried to get that done, Rhonda mentioned, Rhonda pointed out that we're supposed to get permission to pay half down with the work not being done. So that, so that, you know, we have to get permission from the commissioners and council to do that. This is J B West. It's a local company that's been around for years. It's not, we're not hiring a, a company that is coming in from out of town to do this project. The amount at the half down would be for the, for the part that was already approved And then I'm also asking for, for the removal of the old roof and putting, you know, the waterproofing, the, the underlaying and all that stuff as well. My, my non-reverting is paying for that part of it. That amount is $5,426.35. So I'm asking for both of those.
Five thousand, four hundred and twenty?
Six and thirty-five cents.
Okay.
Motion to approve permission to approach the council for additional appropriation.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. I, I would just like to add, this happens not only with roofing companies, with most construction companies. You always have to come up with half. It's unfair to ask the companies to put out all the material with no, with no down payment at all. And so this is a common practice and something that we as the county government should be doing as well.
Yeah.
It's a matter of.
So let me just, so Mr. Francisco, I'm going to ask that you just amend your motion. It's not for an additional appropriation. It's just to go back to the council in order to split up the, the payment that they've already approved.
Correct.
So is this something though, that we can work on where we won't have to come back or that?
Yes, this is something that could be done upfront. If we, we could have presented it differently, it could have been presented differently to the council. Can ask for, they could have, he could have asked for immediate 25, once they approved. Are we allowed to spend $25,000 initially? It just wasn't clear.
Correct.
Typically, you know, they appropriated the fifty some odd thousand dollars for the, for the roof. But yet we don't have an invoice showing that it's done yet. So if it was presented differently to the council, it would have been approved differently.
Then we have to educate the, the department heads and let them know at that point when they had put it on the councils, no, they weren't, no one was there to guide them, to tell them how to do it.
I, I don't know how that happened, but now Jeremy knows.
Yeah, and that's, that's one thing I would request is that, and, and Rhonda's already sent out that email saying that needs to happen. So we need to, we need to watch those agreements from the get-go to see if, if they're requiring or asking for 50% down. We need to present that to the commission and the council upfront so that we can have that permission to do that. We just didn't know. I didn't know that this was how it needed to be done, but now we, now I.
Now we know.
We haven't had a pre-purchase or an advance pay since I've been in, except for after the fact, and no one has ever completed it. Jeremy's the first one to go through it completely.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. And again, thank you for all you did with that storm. That was amazing.
Thanks. Our guys, we were all out there, but our guys are right on it, just like they usually are. So thank you.
We appreciate it. Okay, we're going to move on to, we're going to do the decommission. Because do we have to have any more discussion on that?
No, I just think we need to send it to Ashley to put on the website so that anybody that wants to look at it can look at it for the road use agreement and the decommissioning agreement.
Can I, Commissioner, can I add one thing that you might consider doing? Also directing Ms. Kashmucha to give actual notice to the actual landowners that are going to be leasing of those 10 or whatever it is, so that way they get a mailing also, so they don't come back to you in a few weeks.
I would add that to my motion to approve that also. Yeah, good idea.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Okay, under old business, consider second reading of ordinance reducing speed limits on 500 West.
Morning commissioners.
Good morning.
County engineer. And this is requested by, they're putting around about on two and in 500 West and they'd asked the county to put a speed limit sign there, just so traffic will be aware that they just slow down for the upcoming.
Good idea. Been out there in the afternoons, the traffic is nuts in the mornings also. Make a motion to approve the ordinance by title only.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Read the, read the ordinance.
We can, you have to first.
No, you need to. You need to vote on the motion for title only and then you'll move again.
Yeah.
To approve by title only.
Second.
Correct. All.
I don't have.
Call, call the, call the vote.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
And then?
Ordinance setting new speed limit on 500 West from State Road two to 1,000 feet, 1,000 feet south.
Yep.
Motion to approve the ordinance.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Jay.
Okay, thank you.
So now this would be adopted after published.
Okay, so now we can move on to new business. Consider ordinance amending mobile home permit fees.
Good morning. Joey Winsky, Lepore County Treasurer.
Good morning.
We've, we haven't raised our fees since 1993. And in talking with the other counties, they all charge 10 or more dollars for mobile home permits. So we felt it was time to raise this fee. It all goes to the general fund. Nothing stays in our office.
And what's the current fee?
Two dollars.
From 1993.
And, you know, since then, the cost of supplies has gone up, but we haven't changed, so.
Since this is an ordinance, we would need two readings?
It's your pleasure. You can, we can get a motion to suspend, suspend the rule since you're really just amending the ordinance. If you all agree unanimously, then you can do the two readings today. It's how you want to do it.
Want to amend the, the.
Suspend the rule.
Suspend the rules and.
Well, that would be the first motion.
That's why I just.
Second.
Motion to suspend rules.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Now a motion to consider the ordinance by title only.
For first and second reading.
For first and second reading, yes.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
First reading. An ordinance amending the mobile home permit fee, which was originally instituted in March 8th, 1993, ordinance number 1993 dash five. Second reading. An ordinance amending the mobile home permit fee on the March 8th, 1993, ordinance 1993 dash five.
Motion to approve.
Both. And second.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. So you're set. Thank you very much. Consider ordinance setting additional of three-way stop sign on 300 East and 100 South.
Good morning again. Jay Sullivan, county engineer. Yeah, you looked at the intersection upon the request and it is a very congested intersection. It is a confusing intersection. There's a stop sign from the, on 100 South going north, but there is not one coming south. And I think it's just a good idea to put a three-way stop there on that T.
Oh, okay. Another ordinance?
Well, Mr. Sullivan, I understand there was a comment earlier asking for some additional explanation.
There's two three-way stops there at that intersection. If you're coming from the north on 300, you hit 100 South there. Then if you're coming from the south on 300, you hit another intersection there because 100 South comes in, tees at 300. 300 continues on and then 100.
So what you're saying is there's on 100 South, there's three, two additional besides this one?
No, there's two, there's actually two three-way intersections there. There's the north intersection and the south intersection.
So we, we drove out there and I mean, it'll give you an opportunity to Google it. One of you should Google it and show it to him. But I, I think that the issue that we're having at that intersection, it is primarily at this intersection.
The north one?
Because what happened was they grew corn. Normally they grow the soybeans. And when the soybeans are grown, it's okay because it's, it's, the crop is a lot lower. You can actually see around the bin.
That's the south intersection.
Our situation right now is, is that the corn is up. And I know that the corn will probably be down in a couple more weeks. But in the meantime, we don't have a stop sign there. And if, and people come, they have to actually crawl out of there. They have the stop sign, they've got to crawl out and then they can actually get hit.
I understand.
It is a confusing intersection.
So just for clarification, so everybody, if, if that's okay. So 100 South goes eastbound and tees into 300. Correct?
Yes, from the north.
Yes.
You should have Google Earth map on there.
And so it looks like, to answer your question, what Mr. Sullivan has identified on the map is the north intersection on the north side of 100 South. Not on the south side.
There's already a stop on the south side.
Okay, is that?
I'm just, I'm just trying to clarify. Are they going to put a three, three stop signs at every one of those?
No.
Okay.
Well, you're not. Being for the one intersection.
South intersection is where the corn problem is.
Correct.
That's okay, that's, that's, because I, when I, when people saw this on the agenda, they asked me which one it was going to be. It is, it is a confusing intersection.
Yeah, I thought.
Basically it's confusing because people don't know what they're doing when they drive. They don't get that.
Well.
I agree with that too.
So I just, I just want to clarify.
And so when you have local traffic there, everyone kind of knows where the intersections are. But when you have people that are not local, you know, we run into situations.
Yeah, that's built up, that's built up a lot of.
That's pretty good. That's why, one of the other reasons.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
This sounds like an issue urgent enough that we would make a motion to suspend the rules to vote on first and second reading both.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second to suspend the rules. All those in favor say aye.
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 Now a motion to consider the ordinance under.
Read by title only.
Read by title only.
For first and second reading.
First and second.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
This is ordinance number 2024 dash seven. An ordinance setting additional, addition of three-way stop on 300 East and 100 South. Second reading, ordinance 2024 dash seven. This is an ordinance setting addition of three-way stop on 300 East and 100 South.
Motion to approve. Both readings.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
We good?
We're good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Then it leads us to our last discussion and that's the contract for D E F.
I would make a motion to approve the contract.
So the problem that we have with this is after looking and reviewing our last meeting, what came to light was that this contractor had contacted the auditor's office. There's a question of whether there's some pay to play because by your admission, the gentleman came in for a contract. He spoke and agreed to be a witness in a case for Tim Stables. And I'm very uncomfortable with rewarding a vendor with a contract when he goes to court and he testifies for the person that is hiring him. I realize that work was performed. I have no problem, I, you know, we need to pay our bills regardless. And so to go ahead and pay the bill for the work that the gentleman has provided, even though we didn't approve it, I'm okay with approving the pay of that. And would you?
Right now on the floor is Mr. Haney's motion to approve the contract, right?
Correct.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to sign the contract. Do we have a second?
Think we need to discuss this.
So then you need to second it if you're going to discuss it.
I'll second.
Needs to be second. Okay, now we can open it up to discussion. And if anybody has any questions of me, I'll be more than happy to add something or whatever y'all want.
My first question would be, we have a county financial advisor and Sender in group. Why aren't we using them?
I'm sorry?
So we have a, a financial advisor that's been approved by the commissioners with Sender and company. Why aren't we using that?
So it's my understanding that you have two financial advisors. You have Baker, Tilly and Sender and company on behalf of the commission. But it's my understanding that that was not within the scope of their agreements at the beginning of the year. That this, that, that this TIF reporting was something that was always done by another vendor under a separate contract. And at that, in the past, it was the vendor S E H. That's my understanding. It's my understanding that when S E H actually performed that work, that Mr. Bodick was part of the team from S E H and then he ended up leaving S E H. So that's my understanding of what happened previously.
That's correct, Mr. Di Martino. I think that's accurate. That's been the same individual who's worked for a couple of different companies now. I think they've done this for 15, 16 years in a row, something like that for the county. It's quite a while.
He did that while he was working for S E H. And I believe we did sign a bill for S E H.
Last year.
Last year.
That, right. So it's my understa, and I, I've not had any conversations with S E H. That S E H, for, for this time period, in order to get this filing that needed to be done, they did not have the manpower or somebody in that role to do this reporting. But there are other companies out there that do this. I mean, Baker Tilly does it, Crow Cheswick does it, anybody that does municipal accounting. But I know that we're not there at this point in time because the work has already been performed.
And we had a contract with Baker Tilly.
But not for this, we have, yeah, so you're under contract with Baker Tilly as a financial advisor. And they also advise the council on ARP things, just like Mr. Sender. But within that scope was not, that's not part of the January contract.
So he could have extended to have that scope included.
I, I, yes, I could have sought.
There was already a signed contract with them. And even though it wasn't part of the. the scope of work that they had presented at the beginning of the year, they could have been notified and they could have performed the work for us at an additional cost, correct?
Right, yeah. They would have been notified. They would have probably given a quote. They would have, you know, amended the contract or provided a separate contract for those services. Uh, that, that could have happened. I, and I don't know if it did or didn't.
So it's my, it's my understanding that, uh, the auditor, uh, originally reached out to SEH, and SEH was the one who recommended DEF, because SEH no longer had the, uh, people with the expertise to do that, and they recommended DEF. Uh, it's also my understanding that, um, so there were two companies, and the third, uh, was Baker Tilly, and the contract that was presented back in April was the lowest, um, of, of any of them, and it was twenty percent lower than what SEH actually charged last year. And just for clarity's sake, um-
They were closed bids though, correct? They were open bids?
They were, they were, they were quote-
So the auditor knew what the quotes were when he hired Dan Bodich?
They're not, yeah, they're not-
I don't know. They, they were quotes. There weren't, there, there was, uh, no statutory requirement for that. There was actually no requirement to get quotes at all, but he did anyway. And just for clarity's sake, from what you said earlier, you took some of my comments and lumped them all together as if they all appeared on the same day, and that's not accurate, but just wanted to clarify that. In any event, um, it's, the contract before us, it's been before since April, is twenty percent less. Um, I, and it's performed by the same individual who's done it for the past fifteen, sixteen years, something like that. I'm not sure.
It's also the vendor who went to court where he made arrangements with the auditor to be a witness in his case, correct? What was the time span between, between the time he made the agreement to give him a contract and the time span when he actually agreed to, and, and went on the list to become a witness for the auditor?
It's my understanding that the contract was obviously before some April, so we know that the contract was given to the auditor before, sometime before May, so it was in our inbox in April. Um, and that, uh, the auditor became aware that, uh, an individual by the name, according to his, uh, recollection, uh, according to his court testimony, uh, individual by the name of Shaw Friedman had threatened this vendor that he would, quote, "Never work in Lepore County again," according to his sworn testimony. Um, and the, uh, the auditor became aware of that in May, and then that was when he got added to the list, at least from the court records that I understand. Um, so, yes, this, this vendor who had worked for us for fifteen, sixteen years, went on the stand, testified that Shaw Friedman told him he would never work in Lepore County again. Uh, now here we are. This individual has got a contract for the county that's twenty percent less, and, um, this commission-
Twenty percent less, but not something that-
Uh, is denying that, which, which is interesting. So Commissioner Graham Rosa, Shaw Friedman provided, according to this test, according to his testimony in court, provided free pro bono criminal defense work for you. Is this, is this some sort of tit for task?
Here we go again.
What, what's happening here?
You know, my wife don't care, but then we find out she does.
That's a collateral matter on, on that. We can handle that.
Cleared of everything.
Hold on, hold on one sec. So, there's been discussion regarding this contract. I think everybody agrees that Mr. Bodich's work was necessary and had to be done through, through the filing, through Gateway in the first week of August. That, that work was done. So you have this contract for the whole year. You all have four choices. These are the four choices. You did a motion to approve. You seconded. Now, you could take a vote on that. It could pass. It could fail. Somebody could move to amend that. You could, you could move to modify the contract. You can do, uh, you know, so you have a, a lot of options. I heard Ms. Graham Rosa say that the, that Mr. Bodich does need to be paid for the work that he has performed already.
I believe in paying bills, yes.
So, I mean, that's what is before you. Does anybody have any specific questions of me on a legal, legally?
I would agree with President Graham Rosa that we should pay him for what we, what he did, even though we did not sign a contract with him. Um, just, the, the thing that gripes me is when you got a couple guys that, that for forty-one months have been talking about corruption in Lepore County, but they have never produced any. Even the grand jury couldn't find any. And then we get a situation like this where I pay for play.
I shut down, I asked Mr. Haney about criminal matters.
That's why I don't wanna-
Okay, so I just wanna talk about this contract. So what I hear y'all saying is, well, I don't, I can't put words in your mouth. So you, you-
So we have right now a motion on the table to sign the contract, and we have a second. All those in favor in signing the contract?
Aye.
Aye.
Nate.
Nate.
Okay.
So the motion that we pay-
Hold, hold on one second. So the, so that motion fails. Okay, so then we, we all agree that Mr. Bodich is entitled to payment. So what are you saying, Mr. Morrison? I'm saying that we should pay him for work already done, and it stops with this. Okay. And, and that's good as a first part of the motion. However, there's reporting that needs to be done to, for this type of work. There's another element of work that needs to be done for the auditor's office for the end of the year reporting. So at this point in time, if you agree that his work stops, are you gonna ask the auditor to entertain firms for the rest of the work that needs to be done because we can't leave the auditor's office in the lurch? The work needs to be done.
Yes, he already has a contract with Baker Tilly. He can go to them, and he can have them add on whatever he needs.
Okay.
And then he doesn't even need to come to us to have a contract signed because it could be an add-on to the contract that already exists.
Well, I don't know if Baker Tilly will add on or if it'll be addition. That'd be between Baker Tilly.
Okay. I'm not entertaining.
So, so, so you're, so work, so work that's been done for several months is gonna stop, and then we're gonna bring another company on that's going to have to go back and check all the works and they're-
It's a different reporting, sir. It's a different type of reporting.
It's my understanding that the work that was done, and I don't know for sure because I'm, that the work that was done by Mr. Bodich was for the special TIF reporting, and the deputy auditor can probably speak to this, and that that had to be, the deadline was sometime in August.
August, very early. It isn't done yet, just so you know.
But it's-
It was due on August first.
I know when it was due. I just said it's not done yet. There will be one more part he needs to finish.
Okay, so then I would recommend that you allow Mr. Bodich to finish that work and pay him for that also. Do you know what I mean? Cause that's part of the TIF thing that he started.
So I- My hope here this morning was that we were just gonna, the commission was just gonna do the right thing. Um, in any event, I, I, I received here this morning a, um, a contract, uh, for DEF that was signed by the auditor, um, in compliance with state law since the commission failed to act. So the rest of this honestly is a moot point. The contract's been signed. It's been executed, and-
So then why did you wanna bring it up?
I'm just hoping to show some deference to make you, make you feel better here this morning, but, you know.
I mean-
Trying to play nice.
Participating with the pay to play.
No.
Who are participating.
No, no.
So you won't have a problem when we go out of here and we talk about your pay to play?
There's no pay to play.
So can we have a motion to-
You're, you're the one who appears to be the bagman for Shaw Friedman here this morning.
All those in favor say aye.
This is corruption.